It is 7:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All members of Town Council are present. Councilmembers Maurer, Martin, La Palace, Formicella, O'Rourke, Rooney, and Wales are here in present in town. All virtually, we have council members Katuska and Reed. Mr. Moving on the consent calendar. Mr. Maurer, you had a statement on the approval of minutes.
That's correct. I just wanted to make a clarification on one item from the minutes regarding the board's patient appointment, just stating that the consultation with the town attorney was simply a consultation as to what section of the charter was appropriate to look at, and that there was no opinion from the town attorney, one way or the other, with the matter, and that the council members came to their own opinion based off of the language of the charter.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. I'm going to pass the consent calendar if there's no objection. Hearing no objection, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. I ask that communication items A through the invictus be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to participate? I'll begin with those in Town Council. The takers. I will move virtually, if you are here on your phone, tablet, or computer and you'd like to participate this evening, please remember to unmute yourself at this time and please state your name. Once again, if you are here virtually, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record if you would like to participate in public participation. Hearing no one, I'm going to close public participation. We have no appointments this evening other than one we had in the consent calendar. Okay, I don't see anyone from the front row, so we're going to move to action items. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, Madam Vice Chair.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters, Councilmember Rooney.
Nothing has been brought to attention this committee for council display, we have not met.
Thank you. Item C, do you have an update, Ms. Martin?
I don't have an update, but Park and Lake is meeting this evening down in the annex, so when we finish here, if there's still meeting, I'll go down and have something for you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet tonight on a number of items, actually. We've met on the Emergency Management Performance Grant, proposed discontinuance of a portion of Spring Hill Road, Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC, Arcadis US Inc. Proposal and Professional Services Agreement, contracts with Nature's Edge for snow plowing, CNE Landscaping for snow plowing, and the Grasso Companies for snow plowing. In addition, we talked about a personal service agreement and grant contract with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, otherwise known as DEEP, U.S. Department of Education grant for a STEM computer lab and technology upgrades in our public schools, cleaning services group contract, and a proposed discontinuance of Timothy Hill Road. All reached consensus and are in front of you tonight at council.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. EMI planning committee, we have not met since our last meeting. At the last meeting, I did promise that we will have a meeting in November. I will ask for dates that department heads are available in the month of November, and then we'll collect a date.
Yep, we're ready to move forward. We got all the final refreshed data end of last week, so we're ready to meet whenever you are. We can coordinate offline.
Great.
Date.
EMS Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a meeting tomorrow night. Can I just give the council and the people listening an update? We're in really good shape since last meeting. We have received power to the building. It was a little bit of a struggle thanks to Mr. Lackey finding a very important item for us. We were able to connect this a little quicker than we originally thought, so thank you for the day, Mr. Lackey, for your help there. So that's hooked up, and what that did is that allowed us to get the EMS personnel into the building and remove that temporary trailer that they've been living in, that tight space that they've acquired and found a habitat in for the last 10 months or so. So now they have their whole new space. They're up there, operating to a certain degree. Not at full capacity, but from what I understand, they're doing a pretty good job. I didn't get by there today. Excuse me. Usually I go by every day or do a site visit. I didn't get by there today, but I have a meeting tomorrow. That being said, the ciders are scheduled to come in. From what I understand, they were dropping off equipment. Once again, I didn't see it because I didn't go by today, but they were supposed to drop off some equipment, get that going. The good thing about getting the trailer out of there is now we have the paving scheduled. So the paving looks like in the area of November 15th, next week or so, we'll have a day where we'll pave one section because we have some logistics situations in regards to the ladder truck that's still there and how to move it. So they're going to pave an area and then let that cure and then pave the other area. So they have an operational plan to keep it up, everything working, the EMS and the fire if they need to be, while they do that. So once that's paved, we have the finishing of the floors and the garage doors, which should be ordered next week. That might be the final phase. That takes a little bit of time, but that wasn't in the original proposed budget, you know, so. But either way, the interior is looking great. Everything's looking great. Anybody that has the time, definitely stop by, just take a look. It's coming together well. So we're in the final phase now, which obviously is nice to see. But at this point, that's where we are. That's what I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Maurer?
Just what tends to be a good time to be able to come by and take a look.
Anytime. I mean, just anytime, I'd say after like 8 o'clock. Chris DeCaro is the project manager for Burlington Construction, so just go there, ask for Chris, and he'll show you around. Just tell who you are, and he'll show you around. I mean, anybody could walk in there and talk to him. He's been beyond fantastic as far as like dealing with neighbors, dealing with people coming in, wanting to see the building, budgets. I mean, I don't have enough good things to say about them, so very friendly staff. Just walk in, tell who you are, and he'll show you around.
With the holiday relief, working on Friday, do you know?
I mean, they work kind of every day, but yeah, probably they'll be working on Friday, but I can't guarantee it. But we're in crunch time, you know? So they're taking advantage of as much good weather as they can.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Kellogg, your update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few things to update. First, foremost, I wanted to give an update on the Pepper Street reconstruction project. You'll recall a few months ago, there were significant concerns regarding the timely completion of the project, and several meetings were conducted with the general contractor as a result. I am pleased to report that they have committed significant resources to that project, and they have achieved significant progress. They've devoted a lot of resources. I mean, go by there, sometimes there's several things to operate. They're kind of focusing right now on culvert completion, but they've already, they've completed 90% of the road configuration, 100% of the on-road drainage. The first course of pavement is down, with the exception of the box culvert area. I'm told that the installation of the second half of the box culvert will be done this week. The schedule will be done this week, and once that's done, the intersection will be returned to its full width, and it will be paved. And of course, you've all probably seen the multi-use trail has been cleared and graded. We always anticipated some final work to be completed in the spring. There have been two overarching factors that have caused this to be a little bit more significant than originally planned. One is that Eversource Gas is actively working. They're there today as well, and they are working to relocate a final section of a gas line. That work impacts a relatively small section of Pepper Street near Commerce Drive, but our general contractor cannot get in there to do the final grading in this approximately 500-foot section of the roadway. We are, as you probably know, kind of getting close to the end of asphalt season. The plants typically close in late fall. More of more concern is that, you know, we really need to ensure that that final course of pavement is set within a very narrow temperature range. So we don't want to risk having a compromised product be placed or kind of be in a situation where we're chasing a clock. So we have decided to defer the final course of pavement until the spring. Of course, as you know, we have, the road is paved with that initial course, and it will remain paved through the winter. The second issue is the new traffic signal at Main Street. It cannot be fully installed until a spam poll and traffic sensor unit has been received. The State Department of Transportation recently changed their specifications on that equipment, so that coupled with supply chain issues have been a challenge in impacting delivery. So everything is set there. The framework is ready for that to be installed, but they, our contractors simply can't do it until that piece of equipment comes in, and they're kind of at the mercy of DOT changing their specifications. So again, the contractor has done a great job. The entire project area will be paved, filled with, and line striped this fall. We are working now to secure approval from the state to continue work over the weekend for some off-road activities. There's the parapet walls on the culvert that will need to be done. There's some final off-road drainage work, and there's some other smaller stuff that could be worked on over the winter as long as the state allows us. I believe they will, but we need to get through that. And then in the spring, all the above items that are outstanding and any final punch list items such as sidewalk ramps, guide rails, fencing curbs, driveway aprons, plantings, et cetera, will be done as well as the completion of the trail. That is Pepper Street. The other updates I have are just to let everyone know and ask that you share that our Metropolitan Council of Governments, our COG for this region, is working on a federally required update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for our greater region. They have a public survey, which is available. There's a link here that I'll also put out to the public, but we encourage the public input to help guide decisions on the future of regional transportation systems. I have to announce that Nancy Brolath, our Director of Health, has decided to retire. She will be pursuing some new interests in educational opportunities, and will be leaving town service the end of November. As you recall, may recall, she was our first kind of permanent health director since the former health district was dissolved, and we had to reconstitute them in our health department. She was very involved and integral to that, and obviously, she provided the public health leadership during the pandemic and grateful for all of her hard work and long hours, and we wish her well in the future. And we are actively working on replacing that role. And then last but not least, some business updates. Casa Nostra celebrated a grand opening. They're at 179 Main Street. We have the new bakery and deli, Mariola. They've been approved. They're reopening at 464 Main Street. They're going to be in two units at that location. They've targeted opening by the end of this year. Chipotle, Mexican Grill, and Jersey Mike Subs received their final approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission for their plants to open at 143 Purdy Hill Road. That is the corner of Monroe Turnpike. That approval also includes a third tenant for that new construction. That third tenant has not been identified yet. And last but not least, just wanted to put it out there because I know there's a lot of questions. Panera Cafe is reporting they are on target for the grand opening this month. That is it.
Mr. Kellogg. Moving on. We have one matter of unfinished business. I'm going to make a motion to adopt Option A, Resolution 2294, resolved. That can then, Kellogg, first electman in town Monroe, in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, Section 13A-49, 2, is authorized to provide the owner of each property that bounds the portion of Spring Hill Road commencing at the intersection between lots 365 Spring Hill Road and 255 Monroe Turnpike, and continuing along the frontage of lots 373 and 375 Spring Hill Road and 255 Monroe Turnpike, and terminating at Route 111, the road. They notice of the date, time, and place of the meeting when it is anticipated that the Town Council shall vote to take final action on the discontinuance of the road by mailing a notice to each such owner's address as shown on the last completed grand list of the town by first-class mail, postmark not less than 30 days prior to the date of such meeting. And be a further resolve that the first selectmen is authorized to procure and cause signage to be posted at least 30 days prior to the scheduled meeting date in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, Section 13A-49, 2, stating the date, time, and place of the meeting when it is anticipated that the Town Council shall vote to take final action on the discontinuance of the road, and specifically stating notice of road discontinuance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Discussion. What I can say is that LNA, this was discussed in LNA, and LNA voted to recommend Option A to the Town Council, which puts forward this resolution, which would allow the first selectmen to begin the process of notifying the abutting neighbors of the discontinuance of Spring Hill Road. Mr. Kellogg, would you, discussion, would you report what information we received?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So earlier this summer, as I reported earlier this summer, I received a proposal from the owners of 255 Monroe Turnpike LLC to discontinue, it's what I referred to as abandoning, this portion of Spring Hill Road, the small portion that you have highlighted in the reference map, given from our GIS system. It was originally going to be discussed, I know back at that time, but at the time, the property owners asked for additional time. They wanted to further refine, redefine, or refine, I should say, their redevelopment plans for the abutting properties and how this discontinuance would impact other abutters. I subsequently received a map from them, which they provided, and is included in your packet, which shows the roadway in question, and it also identifies where those two property owners would retain access to their properties. Again, I also received letters from the various property owners that are in this area that would be impacted by such discontinuance, and all those documents are included in your packet. You'll see that all those property owners were supportive of this action. So to kind of reiterate what I had said in my memo in August, but we never really discussed it at that time. The Town Planner, the Chief of Police, and the Director of Public Works all provided to me at my request their reports on the proposed discontinuance. You have those reports, which all are favorable in this regard. I also reported that this discontinuance was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to State Statute 8-24. You've got correspondence from the Town Planner that in July, the commission voted to report a favorable recommendation. Essentially, what that means is that should the council wish to pursue this continuance, it simply needs to have its normal majority vote to pursue. This matter was referred to Special Counsel Vinmarino, who's here with us this evening. In your packet is his original memo or letter of opinion that I had provided. I also asked for a subsequent opinion, which he provided, to address whether or not the abutting property owners could simply disclaim ownership of their land. That would be conveyed to them by matter of law or how that would operate. Again, you have his letter, which basically discusses that that could be done. Basically, the private property owners could address that on their own without town involvement. So again, I presented two options for you. Option A, which would allow me to pursue the further statutory actions that are required as a condition precedent to the council taking final action, or an option to basically deny the discontinuance. Obviously, the resolution before you right now is Option A, which would allow us to pursue. And with that, if you have any questions for me or any of the staff that are here, including Attorney Marino, happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Again, I will just reiterate. The motion that's on the floor allows the first selectmen to begin the process of pursuing road discontinuance. The vote tonight does not actually discontinue the use of the road. Are there any other discussion? Councilmember Martin.
I just have a question. I think it's from the chief. The section of roadway is not utilized by the police department or other emergency vehicles. It's in his memo to me. The lone exception would be a fire hydrant located closer to Spring Hill Road site. Would that fire hydrant be alone?
I believe there was discussion in that regard. Mr. Schultz, you have that information, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Talking with the fire marshal, we anticipate we relocate to the site.
Okay, at whose expense is the relocation?
Not at the town's expense.
Not at the town's expense. Okay. In regards to the fire hydrant, doesn't the town maintain that? Don't we maintain that?
Well, fire hydrants are basically owned and operated by Aquarian, but the town does have to pay a fee per hydrant for that water service.
So the town would continue to maintain?
The town, it is a public hydrant, so the town would continue to pay the per hydrant fee for that hydrant, yes. Yes, in theory, there's a slightly shorter length of main that will get a, will get a small reduction on. It's negligible.
Once it's relocated.
Because it'll be a shorter length of main that will go from, or from the main to the hydrant, yeah, but it's negligible, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Anything else? Hearing nothing, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 2294, Option A. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 920. All right, I'm going to exercise chairman's discretion at this point. We are going to, item J, Resolution 22153. That's a resolution regarding the proposed discontinuance of Timothy Hill Road. I'm making a motion to adopt Option B. Resolution 22, I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22153, resolve that Town Council hereby denies the proposal to discontinue Timothy Hill Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Maurer. Discussion. This matter was also addressed during LNA this evening. Based upon the information that we received, we unanimously decided to recommend Option B, which denies the proposal to discontinue Timothy Hill Road. Among the information that we were given, we were notified that Planning and Zoning Commission voted 4-2-1 to offer an unfavorable review of the discontinuance of Timothy Hill Road. The Director of Public Works, the Chief of Police, as well as the Town Planner, all recommended not discontinuing Timothy Hill Road. Additionally, we received an opinion by Land Use Council, Attorney Vincent Marino, who's here this evening. If anyone has any questions, cautioning the town against approving the request because a steep grant was used to perform significant maintenance on Timothy Hill Road. The last work on Timothy Hill Road using that steep grant was in 2017. Mr. First Selectman, do you have any additional comments?
I think you covered all the relevant information that we discussed during LNA. Again, I provided both options for the council should they want to pursue this continuance or deny it. And again, as you said, Planning and Zoning Commission returned an unfavorable recommendation by supermajority of the votes of council should we wish to continue pursuing discontinuance.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 22153, Option B, which denies the proposal to discontinue Timothy Hill Road. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 920. All right. Next item on the list, Resolution 22144. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-144, resolved. The Town Council hereby approves the dispersment of funds raised by the 2022 Sprint for Monroe as a proposal and its correspondence dated October 24, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second. Second by Donald Wales. Mr. Kellogg.
So I, you know, as we've done every year, the Sprint for Monroe is a wonderful group of volunteers that runs that event annually and raises significant dollars that goes towards for the organizations in our community. They provided in this memo their proposed distribution of their net $20,200 that was raised, and these are fairly consistent with prior years. It's certainly very welcome, and I extend my thanks to the hard work and dedication of the volunteers that comprise the, that make the Sprint for Monroe happen every year. I would ask that you approve their recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Mr. Maurer.
While thanking Sprint for Monroe for all of their hard work and all of the donations, I do want to say that out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain from this vote as a member of the board for thinking Monroe, which is a beneficiary of these donations. I just found it prudent to remove any doubt of any conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. We won't ask that you walk in the hall. Sit right there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22144?
Chairman?
Yeah.
I would recommend, given this will not be unanimous, that you conduct a roll call vote.
Roll call. All right. It will be. Oh, the extension? Maybe I'll make him walk out of the door. All right. Mr. Maurer. Your vote.
Abstained.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Vice Chair La Palace.
Aye.
Councilmember Formicella, aye. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Rooney.
Aye.
Councilmember Wales.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Katuska.
Aye.
Resolution passes 801. Abstention. All right. Item B, Resolution 22145. Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-one dash one four five. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the maintenance and support agreement and our associated, and any associated documents by and between Idemnia Identity and Security USA LLC for the Lyscan fingerprinting systems.
Thank you. Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Wells, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're familiar with this company. They realize them to provide to the police department their automated fingerprinting identification system. Prior agreements have involved the procurement and initial warranty of that system. As those are wrapping up, the company's provided their ongoing maintenance and support agreement. This will migrate everything into one agreement and be a little bit more consistent with our fiscal year. It's been reviewed by the town attorney, who have this letter of opinion, and I ask that you move this forward so we can continue to have support of this essential piece of equipment for our police department.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one forty-five, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
This motion passes nine to zero. Resolution twenty-two one forty-six. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one four six. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the proposal and professional service agreement by and between Arcadis US Incorporated for the third-party review of inland wetlands commission application twenty dash twenty-two dash thirteen. It's twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second. Standing by, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the, there is an application that is currently before the inland wetlands commission from the property owners at one forty-one and two oh one Turkey Roost Road. It is a fairly substantial development application for ninety single-family detached dwellings, as well as a new roadway of almost fifty-six hundred feet. During their meeting, during a meeting in September, the commission voted to obtain a third-party consultant to conduct a review, an environmental assessment of that application, and pursuant to their regulations, that the applicant be responsible for the costs of that third-party review. The town planner, who's here with us this evening, subsequently obtained a proposal from Arcadis, who the town has utilized in the past, and he advised me that the, he informed the commission of the proposal, and that it was acceptable during their October meeting. So the proposal is here for your review. I also have, in addition to the town attorney's letter of opinion, a letter from the property owner confirming their understanding and their responsibility to pay the fees associated with this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Does this end at the end of two thousand twenty-two?
Sorry, does it?
Does it end at the end of, at the end of this year?
Oh, the agreement?
Yes.
I believe the term was a fairly, fairly tight term, because they're simply.
December, yes.
Okay. And the anticipation is that it can be done by the end of December?
Well, the commission is under a requirement, statutory requirement, to render a decision within a certain period of time, so it, it has to get done by then, pretty much.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one forty-six, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item D, resolution twenty-two one forty-seven. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one four seven. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe contract and any associated documents by and between Nature's Edge for snow plowing and sanding.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by, Mr. Mauer. Mr. First Selectman.
So this, this matter, as well as the next two that are on your agenda, I'll kind of combine my comments here. So the town issued an RFP earlier this year for the contracted snow plowing and sanding for the upcoming winter season. We utilize these services primarily to focus on our dirt roads and the industrial park, but also certainly could be used elsewhere when necessary. There were three bids that were received, and our director of public works, Chris Nowacki, who's here this evening, determined all of them were acceptable, and they all obviously are utilizing the template and standard contract that's provided in our template RFP documentation. So town attorney's reviewed this, these agreements, he's attached his letter of opinion, and we'd like to move forward so that public works can utilize the services of, of this, this firm, but also the other two that are upcoming on your agenda as necessary in the upcoming winter season.
Mr. First Selectman, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one forty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item E, resolution twenty-two one forty-eight. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one forty. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the contract and any associated documents by and between C and E Landscaping LLC for snow plowing and sanding.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Colonel, anything to add?
No, I just ask that the minutes reflect, refer to my comments from the earlier resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one forty-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Mr. Reed?
Yep.
You are a yes, okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Why, you can't hear it?
Yeah, sometimes you're on the. All right. Item F, resolution twenty-two one forty-nine. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the vice council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one four nine. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the contract and any associated documents by and between Agasso Companies LLC for snow plowing and sanding.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mauer.
Mr. First Selectman, anything to add? I just would refer to my comments from resolution twenty-two one forty-seven.
Aye. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one four nine, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. At that time, huh? Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. All right. Item G, resolution twenty-two one fifty. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one five out. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the personal services agreement and grant contract and any associated documents by and between the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of the state of Connecticut for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the Wolf Park Basketball Courts project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by, Colonel Wells. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, as I reported earlier over the summer, we were successful in our request for funding from the state bond commission for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the repairs at the basketball courts, basketball courts at Wolf Park. So in my memo, I really want to thank CEO's Bill Holdsworth and Bill Phillips, who did the bulk of the work in supporting these efforts. This was on our priority list of projects, and having funding available from the state directly reduces our need for bonding for this effort. So the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is the state agency that is going to coordinate this project with the town, and has provided a grant contract, which you have before you. Other than the specific scope of work and things that are unique to this grant, much of this language is the standard boilerplate state agreement and attachments that you're familiar with from other grants from the state. It has been reviewed by the town attorney as well. You have his letter of opinion, and I ask that you move this forward so we can continue the process and get this work out to bid and get these courts done.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one fifty, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item H, resolution twenty-two one five one. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one five one. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Monroe a U.S. Department of Education grant award numbers S two one five, K two two, Row one five seven, stem computer lab and technology upgrades in Monroe Public Schools, and to acknowledge and agree with the terms and conditions as referenced in the grant award notification by accepting and utilizing awarded funds and to execute and deliver any associated documents.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, again, this is a, a grant that I reported back in May of, of this, of last year, actually. The federal government has resumed grants that they provide to localities for various projects. I was pleased that among the various projects that our director of economic and community development, Bill Holdsworth, worked to compile, that Representative Jim Heims was willing to support and utilize one of the, one of the few projects that, you know, they're, they're only able to support a limited number of, of projects. So we were happy that he pursued this one. It was subsequently approved by Congress, and so we are happy to move this forward. This grant is being administered by the United, the U.S. Department of Education. There are, as one might, one might imagine, a lot of documents, being a federal grant and an act of Congress. So there's a, of a large volume of, of information before you. They have been reviewed by the town attorney, who provided his attached letter of opinion. As I mentioned in LNA, you'll, you'll note that a large number of these documents, although they are included in their reference, that's why they're here, they are completely irrelevant for this type of grant. These, these grant funds will be utilized solely to purchase equipment, which our technology department will install. And again, I just want to thank Bill Holdsworth for his work in putting this together, and for our technology director, Paul Course, I think is online as well, for his help in supporting Bill by, and in putting this, this grant together and successfully bringing these grant funds to the town of Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say thank you not only to the town officials who made this possible, this is a nice grant coming back to the town, but also to our federal representatives, to Congressman Heims, to the Department of Education, to the members of Congress who voted for this. It's always good to see money coming back into the community from the federal system. And during LNA, just a thank you to the selectmen and to Mr. Holdsworth for letting us know that they will abide by the clause not to text message or email while performing the duties of this grant of procuring computers, lab, and such, so. Very important additional piece of information we got in LNA.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
One of the many, many attachments that's not, not relevant to this grant, but we will absolutely abide by.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two one five one, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item I, resolution twenty-two one five two. Madam Vice Chair.
I move the town council adopt resolution twenty-two dash one five two. Resolved, that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the cleaning services contract and any associated documents by and between Cleaning Services Group Incorporated or Cleaning Services of certain town facilities.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Colonel, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this year, we issued another RFP. This was for cleaning services at certain town facilities. We did receive several bids on this RFP. Cleaning Services Group was the lowest bid, and the one that, and that director of public works, Chris Nowacki, determined to be acceptable. This is the firm that is currently utilized for this contracted service. Although it was the low bid, the costs are higher than budgeted. We knew there was inflation in this, in this service, which was one of the reasons why I went out to bid. Mr. Nowacki has determined that, based on the January first implementation date, the incremental cost is just over ten thousand dollars. So to address that issue, I did propose a budget transfer from the board of finance, which they approved during their October meeting, and funds have been transferred from the HR insurance line to town hall maintenance. You'll recall the HR insurance line will have extra funds in it due to our migration over to United Healthcare. This has been reviewed by Mr. Lito as well. You have his attached opinion letter, and ask that you move this forward so we can continue the cleaning services for these facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mauer.
In LNA, I did ask about the potential causes for why such a high delta of the ten thousand dollars. It's not specifically known. Second, Kellogg, let us know that the suspicion is that a lot of it has to do with wages, as well as probably material costs and stuff put in there as well, but mostly driven by wages.
That was my presumption. I don't know if Mr. Nowacki has further details.
It is directed at wages.
Well, always unfortunate to go over budget, glad that we have it covered, and it's the low bid, so the low bid is what the low bid is.
Thanks. Mr. Mauer, any other discussion?
Sorry, I didn't.
Were there any local bids?
You recall off the top of your head, Mr. Mauer?
Don't believe the.
I don't recall that being.
There was a local bid that came in, it was publicized, out and open to everybody in any other fashion.
I don't know that I have the bid list with me. I don't remember being watching my attention. Do you have, there, I do have, I have the list here, I don't know, it doesn't have a.
Yeah, I don't have the address either.
None of them, none of them.
Fernandez Certified Platinum.
Yeah, Fernandez Certified Platinum. No firms that I'm familiar with in Monroe.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two dash one five two, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. We've already voted on item J. We have no matters of unfinished business that are unfinished, and we have no unfinished matters of new business. There is no second public participation this evening. It is seven fifty P.M. This meeting is adjourned.